I want to call the March 13th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order a roll call. Conan?
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Mark, come in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Ottomar.
Present.
Councilmember Keown.
Present.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right, folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ottomar.
Second, Keown.
Motion by Councilman Ottomar, second by Councilman Keown. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything on the council agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion second to approve the City Council Workshop meeting minutes of February 27th, 2025.
Keown?
Ottomar.
Motion by Councilman Keown, second by Councilman Ottomar. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the workshop is the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Alexis.
Hello. All right, so I am here to, as the mayor mentioned, to present to you guys an overview of our 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAPER. And that is for our community development block grant funding for the year 2024. The CAPER is a HUD requirement that we submit our accomplishments for the previous calendar year or program year. And that is due to HUD 90 days after the end of our program year. So for us, our program year ends on December 31st. We have to submit it by March 30th. So I'm here to present to you guys how we spent our funds last year and to field any questions. So as you guys can see, 2024, it was the 50th year of CDBG, and so we celebrated that. Just wanted to give that a little shout out for you guys. But here in O'Fallon, how we utilize our community development block grant is in these five ways. The bulk of what we do are home repair programs, and then we have public services funding, and that's up to 15% of our annual allocation. And how we spend that allocation is through our emergency homeless prevention program and our transportation program. So our interior home repair program, that's up to a $7,500 forgivable loan, zero interest. If the homeowner stays in the home for five years, it is forgiven. And those are to address, as the name suggests, repairs needed inside the home. And so we assisted, as you guys can see, 19 households and for a total of $128,696.34. A bulk of what we did were HVAC replacements. We also engaged in some weatherization projects and some accessibility repairs. We also have our exterior home repair program. And so that's up to a $10,000 grant for the homeowner to use for exterior home repair needs. So we were able to assist 12 households with the funding in 2024, and that totaled $105,834.28. So some of the projects that we were able to do, we did some mudjacking, deck replacement, and roofing. And so it's important to note that all of the projects that we do complete bring homes back up in debt compliance and ensure that they are safe and accessible. We also have our mobile home repair program. So that's up to a $3,000 grant for individuals who own mobile homes here in our community to address any kind of repair needs that they have. So we were able to assist two households in 2024 with HVAC replacement and some accessibility needs. So our public services programs. So emergency homeless prevention, we currently contract with St. Stokman and Care Service. They're our subrecipient. So what this looks like, it's funding to be able to keep residents living in their homes. So if they're getting behind on their rent, on their mortgage, or their utilities, they work with St. Stokman and Care Service to ensure that they can stay living in that, in their home. The goal is to prevent eviction or foreclosure. So we're able to assist, we count it two different ways, so 25 households for a total of 65 individuals. And so we spent $28,653.30. And so we did use multiple funding years in 2024. Lastly, we have our transportation program. And so this is a program, it's for individuals who can qualify, obviously, O'Fallon residents, who qualify one of three ways. So they have to be at least 62 years of age or older, or meet HUD Section 504 definition of being legally disabled, or whose household income is at or below that 80% of the area median income. So for a household of one, for example, that's about $57,600 total gross income. So we assisted, we had 96 residents who were registered for the program, but we provided 65 individuals with 1,095 one-way trips to medical and essential living appointments. So those are medical appointments here in St. Charles County and essential living here within the city of O'Fallon. We also receive home funds through the St. Louis County Home Consortium. And so we don't directly administer that. No CDBG funds are used for this. Traditionally, this has been used for down payment assistance. And so we were able to assist one household in 2024 after a couple of years of not being able to assist anyone. But what the main thing we did with home funds last year is we worked to amend our plan with HUD through St. Louis County to be able to engage in affordable rental activities. And so we had our notice of funding opportunity was out in 2024, and we awarded that in January of this year. So I'll be excited to report those outcomes this time next year. So that's how we spent our CDBG funds in 2024. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Next is O'Fallon Theater Works, proposed theater improvements. Jennifer?
Good evening. My PowerPoint is a little bit longer than that. So hang on. Okay. So this evening, I'm here to discuss some improvements that we are looking to do within the old City Hall gymnasium. We are looking to move forward in creating more of a theatrical space for that, for that area. So I wanted to go ahead and just kind of share some information with you, kind of where we've come from, where we are, where we would hope to move to. This year, for 2025, we have already announced what our productions are going to be. We're currently in the middle of the complete works of William Shakespeare. Over the summertime, it will end up being Six, the musical, this is the teen edition, and then Curious Savage. We are currently working on getting our holiday production put together as well. Next is the theater communities that are within the area. St. Peters has one, Kirkwood Performing Arts Center, Rhyme Theater in Kirkwood, and then also the Clayton Community Theater. And these are some images of what their theaters or auditoriums look like. The ones that is mainly in blue, that is the Kirkwood, so it's a top and bottom. And then the other two are the Rhyme and I just lost the name of the other one. Yeah, the St. Peters piece. Thank you very much. Just having a moment. So to give you an idea of the space in which they have and the space that we're currently working in, it's ourselves. And a little bit about the background as to where we have come from. OTW, also known as O'Fallon Theater Works, was formed in 2001 and has been performing within the configuration of the original gym here in City Hall, prior to City Hall even taking ownership. The gymnasium has been a multi-use space until fall of 2024. Then that space then has become dedicated to more of a theatrical or an auditorium purpose. And as far as any sort of improvements go, the last improvements was back in 2000, taking care of some asbestos removal is what I had learned. This year, we've had quite, excuse me, 2024, we have actually had quite a bit of traction and growth. We had four productions this year. Scrooge and Mean Girls, as you can see here, which is in, over to your right-hand side, those two alone beat out or came very close to beating other theatrical years with all of the plays combined. So you will see the highest grid was all four of our shows put together this year for 2024. We do have a new ticketing platform. This is also the same platform that we use for Celebration of Lights, for the Old Fashioned Holiday Stroll, and for the drive-through. We did, like I said, add the holiday play. We also added credit cards to the concession stands for acceptance. We did get improvements with tiered seating. And through the Renard Center, we did a Dine and Discover program where there was a dinner prior to the holiday show, and some of the characters came down, kind of did meet and greet, signed the play bills, and had a little chat, some walkarounds with them prior to going upstairs to watch the show. And that was very well received, and it did sell out. And when we did have our Christmas production, 74% of those ticket sales were people who have not purchased tickets with O'Fallon Theater Works before, based on our current tracking with Ticket Spice. That's where the real data is at. So I thought that was quite interesting to see that we're starting to reach out in other directions. As far as future growth goes, there's, there is a lot of potential here. One is getting into season tickets, the possibilities of assigned seating, and then bundling that holiday experience with other activities that are taking place within this city. For example, we had our trolley rides through Celebration of Lights. There was one family that bought out the entire trolley, and it was 30 people. What they did is they did the Sunday matinee. Then once they were all done with that, they came over and then they rode the trolley through Fort Zoolaw Park. So we would like to be able to make some more of those magical moments with bundling things through the holidays, so people can see more than just one piece of what O'Fallon has to offer. We do have several limitations, and this has been identified through staff, and we work with the directors. They're the ones who are in that space. They're the ones that are using that space. So it's very important for us to listen to what they have to say. Structural light leaks, limited fly space, and some of this I'll explain here in a moment. Limited wings, there's obstructions that we need to work around. The platforms itself are restricted in size. Lighting and sound, we currently bid out each year. Our control booth is a six-foot table, so therefore we do not have one. The dressing rooms are very limited as far as build space and storage, of course, is always a necessity. A lot of our storage is over at the senior center, and we take it back and forth through the parking lot with wagons and flatbed rollers to make it all happen. To kind of explain what wing space is, is the fact of where a person is sitting in the audience and looking through, and that space that is between where maybe the curtain or a wall is and where the actual backstage wall is. So we don't want people to be able to see in that back corner. So the ability to be able to switch out scenery or have people in the wings waiting to come out on stage, you have to get very, very creative. So that's only 36 inches wide, which is, is, that's not a lot. Next is a limited fly. And so what that means is it's the space above the curtain area. So that's where you would store your, your lights and your scenery, any droppings that would come down from there. We have that. However, none of the mechanics work. So things just hang there, but there's nothing we can do about it with, with the mechanics. There is a vision. This is where the fun part comes in. Taking a little bit of inspiration from the rail district, started doing some thinking and how we may be able to combine some of that vision into City Hall. So starting to really group all of these pieces together. Currently, to give you an idea of what we have, to be able to see the vision of where we could go, is if you have not been up in that space before, this is an overview of what the stage looks like. And in front of there, those are rented platforms that are four by eight, and they all get connected underneath together to be able to create a stage extension. We do rent those each year. Then in the backside of it, one side is a dressing room, then behind is a very small alleyway that you do have to go up probably three or four stairs to get around to the other side, which is called the green room. There is a restroom over there and a second dressing room. The second dressing room used to be Facility Maintenance's main office prior to the renovation of City Hall, if you remember looking at those plans. So just to give you an idea of where that is, some of the challenges is to be able to get on stage. Many times, people have to go up and over the alleyway through the dressing room to be able to get up on that side. A conceptual idea of this, and this is all without speaking to an architect, so this is just visionary from our group, looking to potentially kick out the front of the stage by at least 20 feet, which then opens up the back of the stage where they can actually build their scenes, and that would become more of a scene shop. Adding in some doorways so there's other options from the dressing rooms to be able to get up onto the stage. The wings, which were 36 inches before, as you can see, would be bumped out as well. So this does allow for our ADA accessibility. We need to take a look at being able to get someone up on the stage if they do need that assistance. And like I said, the additional stage entrances as well. And this is where the fun comes in. So with the vision of the rail district, I kind of took this, started putting and piecing some things together from a carpet sample that is in the center of this, this image that you're seeing. And this carpet sample was based off of railroad tracks. From there, I ended up taking the coloring, which you would see on my far left side, and pulling color out to give you some ideas of what color schemes we could work with. Additionally, it ended up being, you will see next to the color scheme, you'll see the railroad ties. Well, those railroad ties inspired me to take a look, and at the very bottom picture where it's a frontal picture of the, all of the seats laid out, you see the green walls in the bottom half are slats. So that just kind of reminds me of the railroad ties. At the very top center, you will see a grid. That is an example of a lighting grid that we would utilize to be able to hang the lights, the spotlights, and that would need to be retractable and then be able to go back up. Otherwise, we're going to be climbing up on a very tall, tall ladder to be able to make those adjustments from one to the other. Next, it gets into, we need sound, and we need to be able to have the acoustics in there. So I ended up seeing some of those soundboards, and they were crisscrossed, and they reminded me of a structure of a bridge, an old bridge of a railroad track with the X's going through it. So as you can kind of see down in that lower right-hand corner. But just a little bit of inspiration and fun as to where the potential could be to kind of get an idea of what that vision is. It can be hard to see something from a gym and then turning it into something that is, is more of a theater. So we've hit on a lot of things as far as where the needs are for upgrades. We talked about the scene shop and the extensions of the stage itself, the ADA accessibility, the need of storage and dressing rooms. One of the biggest things that needs to happen first and foremost is the removal of the basketball hoops and also the scoreboard that is currently in there. Looking to also do some new seating with padding, the ability to be able to put those rows and numbers on there so we can do the assigned seating for the ticketing that we'd like to do in the future. Painting, carpet, blackout curtains, stage curtain, the fly system, pipe and drape, backdrops. So there's a list of the lighting needs, showed an example of what the grid would look like, the actual light fixtures themselves, light boards, projector, spotlights. There's quite a bit that is involved, and this is a brain dump as to what we were able to come up with at this point. So of course, once again, there's sound that we need to work with, and a sound booth would be great. And now we're getting into the really fun part, resources. Where we are, what we're looking at, currently, right now, in the transient guest fund, which is the 260 account, we have $20,000 approved for the new lighting grid system. What I would like to do is ask to see about changing that from the lighting grid system and reallocating those funds to an architect. And the reason we're saying that is, is because depending on the design that is come up with for the theater, it's going to determine where this lighting grid goes. We don't want to buy something, put it up, and then it not end up working in the actual space that we end up with. So we're kind of put the cart before the horse, they say. So looking to see if, if with a head nod, we would be okay to move forward with reallocating the funds from a lighting grid towards an architect at, at, once we get to that point, and depending on what you all say here this evening. Next is also in the 260 account. We do have a total of $75,000 approved in the 2025 budget for the stadium event. And I have been working with a group called Barrels and Brews. It is a whiskey, bourbon, tequila, wine tasting event. They actually did this down in Cape Girardeau. I drove down there, spoke with them, and I've been working with them now for a while, bringing them to the stadium. As of now, this is not an out-of-pocket expense from us, except some time, you know, staff time, as far as that goes. So I would like to propose that the funding that's there, maybe taking $65,000 of that, holding back 10 just as a just-in-case moment type situation, and seeing if we can reallocate that towards the theater improvements. And then, of course, as we're going through the year, there's also going to need to be construction and, you know, final finishes. So that would be something that we would be looking for from the current 260 account this year, and then going into next year as well. So this is an idea of some of the initial pricing that I have gotten by doing some research. Just to get down, the basketball hoops is $24,000. I know. Unless anybody has somebody who would like just to go and start yanking, I don't know what to tell you. You got a sawzall? And I have safety goggles. And we all need anger management from time to time. So as you can see, this is going to get up there, but the potential is definitely, definitely there. Shall I keep holding on this one or quickly continue? Quickly continue. So an estimated timeline, once again, this is all based on the information in which I have now. The key is getting an architect on board and getting a real snapshot as to what we are looking at. We are fully booked for four productions this year, so we have to take that into account as well. And I want to make sure that you also understand that the theater itself is not just for O'Fallon Theater Works, but it can also be used for speaking series. It could be used for corporations to come in and maybe have training or speaking series or auditorium uses as well, or even like small musical entertainment pieces. So it's, it's not just a one-use-only piece. With planning, we can get through this. So March through May, what we would like to accomplish is to be able to get some renovations moving. First and foremost is approval of finances, creating an architectural design and starting with removing those basketball hoops, getting some painting done, and getting some chairs in place and blackout blinds if we can. So then moving in June through September, hopefully, we could get through some design approvals, get chairs in place, start to research deeply where we would be with sound and light, and do whatever appropriate bidding we need to do. October through December, it would be more so getting everything ordered, hopefully getting ready to have it delivered as well, and going through the process of going into phase two budgeting during that timeframe. The biggest renovations would take place in January because we do have a play that is the first two weekends of December. So that would leave us the third and fourth week of December, which is also Christmas and New Year's, which would probably get a little difficult to get people to start a construction project at that time. Our first play is back in March, so we need to be able to start kind of getting an idea of finishing things up. And then April through May would just be finalizing things. But there is conversation about maybe not doing the very first play and just sticking to three plays. That gives us a little bit more time because then the summer play would be in June. So I do want to thank Chris Lanham. He is a very dedicated, long-term volunteer and for O'Fallon Theater Works, and he did a lot of these graphics. And so I just want to make sure that he is noted for, for doing that type of work. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you, Jennifer. That was a great presentation. Can you tell us how many people the auditorium currently seats and how many are expected to be able to be seated, given this new proposal?
So we would be at a max capacity around 300. I want to say potentially like 330. So right now, we've been hitting around 250. So Scrooge, we had two nights that were, were sold out in our eyes with things. The, the current limitation right now is we still have two more pieces of the tiered seating to add on to that. However, we don't have the width to do that with the current layout. But once we can, you know, move some things around, we will be able to add on those pieces and set up those additional chairs.
Thank you. And then to follow up with that, what about parking? Is parking on the Is parking on the city hall grounds prohibitive for that many people or we're good?
No, we're fine. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Snowden.
Thanks, Jennifer. Great presentation. I wanted to invite the council and with the mayor's approval, perhaps the time between this meeting and any closed session we might have, we might take 10 or 15 minutes and Jennifer and Craig and others can show folks the gym, how it sits today. I know some of you may not have been in there recently. So I'd like to extend that invitation with the mayor's permission.
Okay. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question about the extension that we rent currently?
Yes.
I'm assuming that we wouldn't have to rent that anymore?
Correct.
We do this.
Correct.
And do you have a price point for that? I mean, is it thousands of dollars?
To rent it is $10,000 a year.
So a year?
A year.
Okay. Thank you.
So you needing a head nod for the 25 and the 65?
Please and thank you.
Anybody have a problem with that? There you go.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see it be finished. I still can't believe it's going to cost $24,000 to remove a couple of basketball hoops, but... Oh, I've seen it.
I'm hoping that is...
Nope. Why is it not opening? There it is.
Yeah, that's a scary thought.
There we go.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods. If you have upcoming plan and zoning commission agenda items.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to go through our April 3rd agenda for planning and zoning. And I've got some slides to show you. So first off, this one's going to look familiar. This will be the third time we've seen it in less than a year. But it's similar in ways, different in others. But this is the Caledonian Mixed Juice Building, Zone Commercial. And so it's a new plan for this being proposed. There's the property north of the soccer fields, north of the hotel in Caledonia. So here's, here we go. So really, the only retail being proposed now is this one corner. That'd be the kind of the southwest corner there, I guess. There'd be one, one kind of commercial bay on the first floor. All everything else on the first floor would be apartments, and there'd be four stories apartments. So there's less parking required. So there was a parking lot kind of shown, kind of up here that's no longer. But they do have parking that's been, you know, shown here. Parking on the street, 90-degree is being proposed. So less parking is being required with the less, and it's actually less units. Before, it was condos on the fifth floor, so there's no condos now, and it's just apartments. Just a landscaping plan. Yeah, was there any questions on that one?
David or Jeffrey?
Can you highlight again, just really just that corner, that little mini-corner that's going to be commercial? Did I misunderstand?
Right there.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have...
I was just going to say that the proposal that used to have, I want to say it was a five iron golf simulator and a indoor shooting simulator has moved across to the hotel because the kitchen that would, that would work for both of those uses is in the hotel. It used to be there was a restaurant and a kitchen in this building, so those simulators were in this building. That's been moved across the street to the hotel. So we're still getting those, it just won't be in this building.
Sir, are we still getting the brandy?
I'm sorry?
The tech.
Yes, that is correct. That's what this commercial space is.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, Mr. Woods.
Okay. Next item, this is at 1155 Technology. This is for a new hotel. And this was submitted a couple of years back also. I'm not positive it made all the way to the council. I know we headed to P&amp;Z, but it was withdrawn. This is down right at K and 64, kind of between, there's the storage facility here and this is, not Labora, I'm drawing a blank on that. Timber Creek Center, yeah, is the restaurant. Timber Creek's the restaurant. Is it Labora Center? I think it is Labora Center.
No, that's not Labora. It's the big center.
Okay, I don't know the name of that then. I forget. I used, I could probably remember here soon, but looking at hotel there. And they're going to be sharing the drive that goes back to the strip mall.
I think that's what it was.
Which I don't see it showing there either. But that would be the four-story hotel Hampton Inn. There's the building elevations for it. And landscaping plan, okay. Another color elevation to that. Okay, moving along to another project down in Caledonia. This is a multi-tenant commercial building. So this is right across from what we were just looking at. That Mixed Juice Building was on this lot. This would be the hotel property. This is the soccer fields. This is kind of over there between the lots and the highway, this little triangle piece. Multi-tenant building, this is the elevations for that. And they're pretty much using every usable part of this lot. It's like we saw, it's an odd-shaped lot, but the building kind of on the southern half, and then they got parking kind of around it. And backing out, this is the same road that goes around to in front of the hotel. So parking around there. Landscaping plan for that.
Do we know who's going in there?
I don't know that. Patrick, have you heard about that, the strip mall there?
The users for that space?
Yeah.
It's broken into three units and they have letters of intent on two of the units. I think commercial users and then they mentioned the fact that maybe another thing, the third one might be a, have some retail sales associated with it.
Thank you.
Next one, we have a new phase of the senior development off of Tom Ginever. They're just kind of finishing up the three-story building that's going in here. They're looking to do pretty much the same building along with some commercial on this remaining part. We've had a few meetings with them and this plan does show the roundabout that's been discussed here at Cool Springs and T.R. Hughes. They would be donating right away for that and accommodating that, and they'd have an entrance off that into their development. This would be the new building, multi-story seniors. This is the building that's pretty much close to being done right there, I believe. And then they have this commercial building. They're not, it's a spec at this point, they're not proposing any, just...
But they will build the commercial building.
That's what we believe, yeah.
They will build the commercial building.
That's what we believe.
Right, they will, they will build it.
That's what we believe. We had a question, because we kind of questioned the same thing. We weren't sure. We sent out comments just earlier in the week and I haven't got a definite answer.
Okay, they will build it though.
I guess. That's the overall plan of the whole senior project. Got it? That's a blow-up of the commercial that they will be building. Here's the elevations of that building. Elevations of the senior project. Okay, so this is another, we just approved this probably, I want to say it was in November, back on track veterinary hospital down on Technology and Waterbury. The hospital is kind of on this piece. This is this little remnant there. We had approved a plan previously, that's not good. This is what we approved before, site plan, went through planning and zoning. And they're changed it quite a bit, so that's why it's coming back through. This building is kind of like that and this is the new, the new building. It's larger and it's reconfigured, so it's that pose now versus that, if that makes sense. So we required a new plan on that, just given all the changes, so we've got that coming back through. Okay, and the last thing we're working on is a code amendment. This is something that's come up here recently, and this was actually even recommended in our comprehensive plan to look at the density in the downtown overlay to accommodate new developments. So we've got some language that we're kind of been talking about, nothing set in stone. I just want to let you know, this is kind of where our thought process is. So just in the downtown and for property zone mixed use, we propose language that properties larger than 10 acres, they could modify the density requirements per P&amp;Z and/or council approval. We wouldn't have a number on it. It's like, okay, this is what they're proposing. We would just look at it on a case-by-case basis, and it really wouldn't come up too often because it would just be downtown on mixed use properties over 10 acres. So, yeah. So that's what we're thinking on that. And a couple other things, while we're looking at that, we wanted to look at a few other, few other things. And we have one of these on our agenda tonight about sheds, maybe changing the process and the size on those, so we don't have that come into the council maybe so often. We've been doing research on what other communities do, we'll have that, and we're wanting to raise that size up to be consistent with maybe some other communities. Another thing that came up recently is solar farms. We're proposing a conditional use permit for that if it's over, over 20 acres. So we'd change the code on that and to require conditional use permit that would go to council. And then metal siding, this is something we've heard over the years. You know, we still wouldn't allow like the rib panels that you see more in industrial, but we've been, I've been talking to an architect that has, you know, really nice architectural-grade panels that we don't allow. We tell them metal's not allowed, but they have a case and they were going to send me some more information that maybe we should, you know, allow some of these in certain respects around town. So it's similar to like an EPIS product, but it wouldn't be a rib panel. It'd be more architectural grade. So that's something that we're looking into. And that was my last slide there.
That it?
Yeah.
Questions for David? Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Any other items for consideration? Then, like that most closed session, 6100211, legal action clause of action litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential privilege communication between a public governmental body, its representative and its attorneys. 6100212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 61002112, sealed bids related documents until the bids are opened and sealed proposals related documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
Ragsdale.
Motion for Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bibb, roll call Conan.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottemeyer.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Kewen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascala.
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Okay. One call to order. The March 13th, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Cascala.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
He's here somewhere.
Councilmember Ottemeyer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right, if everyone please stand for the invocation by Sister Joanne, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Cascala.
Lord of all hopefulness, awaken us. Show us the meaning in our toil, that we may ever rejoice in the promise of the seeds we sow. Look of all righteousness, awaken us. Show us the good path that we may walk with confidence in your wisdom and understanding. Lord of all hospitality, awaken us. Show us the refuge of eagle's wings, that we may always be people of shelter in times of storm. Lord of all freedom, awaken us. Show us the courage that called our forefathers out of bondage, that we may always stand with the bound and the oppressed and be their champions. Lord of all peace, awaken us. Show us the heart that stills even raging waters, that we may make still raging hearts and reconcile warring neighbors. Lord of all charity, awaken us. Teach us of the unending return on our sacrifice, that we may rejoice more fully in our giving. Lord, you have eyes for the just and ears for their cry. Awaken us, a heart of justice, that you may count us among their neighbor. Lord, our God, you have given these your faithful people the grace to maintain their hope in you through all life's changes and to taste and see your goodness. We bless you. For the gifts you have shouted on us, we ask that they may find joy in a renewed strength of spirit, that they may have good health, and that they may inspire us by the example of their serene way of life. We ask this to Christ our Lord. Amen.
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 Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Huh? Oh, what the hell is that? Hi, folks. You have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Ragsdale.
Second, Ottemeyer.
Motion for Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Ottemeyer. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First thing on the presiding office report, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Lester Englemaier from an alternative member to a Member Board One on the Veterans Commission with the term expired to September of 2026.
Smith.
Roth. Second.
Motion for Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next thing on the presiding office report, we have an update from the Veterans Commission, Ms. Laurie Stock.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I am pleased to provide an update on the O'Fallon Veterans Commission and our ongoing efforts to support and honor our local veterans. I'm going to break this down into three categories. Community engagements and events, our recent initiatives. We've strengthened our connection with the O'Fallon veteran community and events such as Pearl Harbor Day that we held last December, our strong participation correction. We saw strong participation and public support. We will continue to collaborate with local organizations, including the Mid-America Veterans Museum and area VFWs to expand our outreach efforts. Second phase, programs and support initiatives. We have a veterans assistance program with the city that remains active, providing resources to those in need, including access to benefits, healthcare guidance, and employment opportunities. We are working on expanding our veteran recognition efforts through new community partnerships. And finally, future plans and goals. Planning is underway for upcoming events, including the Vietnam Veterans Honor Ceremony and the USO Show here at City Hall on March 29th. Our ceremonies for 2025 have... Our ceremonies for 2025 have been assigned to members of the commission, and we are excited to have the community enjoy the ceremonies this year. We aim to enhance veteran awareness programs within O'Fallon and increase public involvement in our initiatives. The O'Fallon Veterans' Commission remains dedicated to serving those who have served. We appreciate the continued support of the mayor, the city council, and the community in our mission. Does the city council have any questions for the commission tonight?
Questions for Lori.
Yes, sir.
Come on, come on. You've got to have one question for Lori.
One. The atomic number of zinc is 30. Did that help?
Lori, don't we have a upcoming music bingo fundraiser?
Well, okay, let me take the Veterans' Commission hat off and put the MAVA, Mid-America Veterans' Museum, hat on. We do have a music bingo.
I thought.
On May 16th at the O'Fallon Elks Lodge. If you are interested, we still have sponsorships and tables available. Go to www.mavm.org and get your tickets. Looking forward to seeing everyone there. Any other questions?
I, I plan on getting a table there. I'd just like to challenge the rest of the council to also get tables there to support the, the museum and that, so.
It's a, it's a boatload of fun. It, it is. Maybe you'll win the Enemies of the United States game this year.
That is the best.
That is the best game. So if there are no other questions for me, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
There he is. Next is citizens' comments. Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, city public advocate, also running for city council on April the 8th. A couple of things on the agenda that I'd like to go through. First of all, the reconsideration of Bill Number 7725 is a total waste of money. It will be a detriment and a public safety hazard to our community. In my opinion, there will be a number of accidents, because drivers of certain age categories and the demographics won't understand or have some confusion, and I think it's, we're opening up a Pandora's Box. The traffic patterns of a roundabout are very difficult to maneuver. The confusion in the demographics of first-time drivers, that being high school drivers, newly-licensed drivers, senior citizen complex that's close by, and senior citizen neighborhoods that are on Tom Genever and near North Cole Springs and Tierra Hughes Boulevard. There are, this roundabouts cause a lot more accidents than regular three-tiered stop sign intersection. It's not a four-way, it's only three-way. And do we really need this roundabout? There's some funding from MoDOT and County Road Board match. Money could be better utilized on other projects. The reimbursement for MoDOT will be $986,700. Design with Oats and Associates is $151,000. The county's portion of the project is $277,500, and the city's portion for this roundabout is another $277,476. The motion to reconsider, I believe, must be somebody in the negative that voted no, and I'm not sure exactly who that person is, because they're not identified within the reconsideration bill 7725, but it would have to be somebody in the negative to comply with our home rule city charter. For those reasons, I ask that you deny this roundabout in Bill 7725. It's a total waste of taxpayer dollars at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Resolution A is production services for the Herogen Freedom Fund in the amount of $35,000. Why aren't our staff of our Parks and Recreation Department, which some of them go and get a degree in this type of management, to put on productions of this size? Why aren't we utilizing in-house crews?
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Resolution B is fireworks contract for $169,203. Why are we not getting business donations, donations from the Chamber of Commerce and other organizations? And the $35,000 contract.
Mr. Dinoff.
For.
Mr. Dinoff. Mr. Dinoff, your time is up, sir. Our next speaker is Jamie Crunk.
My name is Jamie Crunk. I live at 1611 Platinum Court. I'm 71 years old, and I live right by where the roundabout's going to be, and I know how to do it. So we'll make sure that it gets there, okay? Because I'm tired of almost getting hit at the stop sign every time I go to pull out. I'm excited that all of these things are happening. Keep doing the things you're doing. Fireworks is a great thing. We draw a lot of people into the city of O'Fallon, and it takes special people to be able to shoot those fireworks off. So another great day. If you guys could do anything about the storm tomorrow, I'm also worried. We had hail last year on the 14th of March, and I would really like it to either go north or south of me. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jamie. We would if we could. Next is word reports. Word five.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few HOA announcements. We have Brookside HOA this Saturday, March 15th, from 10 to 12, here in the multipurpose room. Wednesday, March 19th, we have Magnolia here in the multipurpose room from 6 to 8. And then on Tuesday, March 25th, we have Villas of Dame's Park, also from 6 to 8 in the multipurpose rooms. We have lots of HOAs. It's just that time of year where everybody's scheduling their, their meetings, so hope to see everybody here. Thank you.
Linda?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Word two, word one.
Thank you, Mayor. You're going to skip us, huh?
No.
All right. So the only thing I have tonight is that, just a reminder that there is a senior activity fair that is coming up. It is on Wednesday, March 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Trig Banquet Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roth.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have nothing tonight.
Okay. Word two.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hurwick.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just like to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Here we go. Word three.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, the most exciting and entertaining political discussion since October is going to be this coming Tuesday, March 18th, sponsored by the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council and the Senior Residency Advisory Board, is the candidate forum will be held right here in Chamber Commons, or, I'm sorry, council chambers at 6:30. Love to see as many of you out as, as we can.
Mr. Bibb.
Thank you, Mayor. With the weather getting warm, just want to remind all the residents to keep their eyes out for, for kids and motorcycles that are out enjoying the, the heat that we're now feeling. Hopefully, it comes back after the storm. And then lastly, hoping I'm stealing some of Mike's thunder. If you're in Ward Three and your recycling bin hasn't been picked up, just keep putting it out, and, and people will be by. That's it.
Thank you. Word four. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick housekeeping item, March 24th. I forgot to look at where it was. Twin Chimneys, seven, their HOA at 6:00 p.m. at Sunrise Methodist. The other thing is, as Mr. Bibb stated, it's springtime. It's a little early for motorcycle awareness, awareness month, but I'm seeing them out there, so kids and motorcycles, keep your eyes out, slow down a little bit, set your phone down, pay attention to the road. You don't want to hurt anybody. Thanks. Mr. Ottemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great day to live, work, play, and pray in the city of O'Fallon. Most of my thunder's been stolen by the, the rest of the council, which that's a good thing. That means we're all aware of everything that's going on out there. But after walking and knocking on some of the doors the last few weeks, one of, there was a resident that brought up a concern, and Mr. Bibb mentioned a little bit about bicycles and bicycle paths. Just be very careful when you guys are driving out there. Bicycles are many times unseen, and when a bike, when a car takes a right-hand turn in front of a bicycle, that usually means that bike's going to go into the side of that vehicle. So be careful out there. Make sure you're aware on the sidewalks and the, and the bike paths along the roads. Watch your right turns. Look over there. Just be aware, this is the time of year that these bikes are, they're just itching to get out, and we'll see a lot of them. So, so be safe out there. Ottemeyer out. Thank you.
City administrator's report, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries this month. Residential Plans Examiner Joe Garner has been with O'Fallon for five years. Public Works Maintenance Crew Leader Michael Branscombe has been with us for 20 years. Fleet Coordinator Nick Bazelli and Police Lieutenant Jody Weber have been valued members of our team for 25 years. And Street Maintenance Worker Richard McCurren has proudly served our citizens for 30 years. I want to thank all five of these individuals for being an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all of these years, and that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you. Brings told business, we have a motion to reconsider Bill 7725.
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth. Do I have a second?
Bibb.
Same by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments? Is that a roll call or not?
Yes, sir.
Ah. Cast your vote.
Can you answer questions, sir?
I was, did, is there a question? I asked, if there's any questions, I didn't see anybody.
So are we voting on reconsider?
You're, you're, you're voting on to reconsider this bill?
Okay.
Okay? This is, this is not, if the passes to reconsider, then we will still have to revote.
Okay? This has to pass back.
Okay.
That's for, excuse me, sorry. This is for passing it. So do you want a roll call?
I, I need a roll call to reconsider.
Yes, okay. So it'd be a roll call.
Be a roll call.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Councilmember Cuskella.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
No.
Councilmember Hurwick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
No.
Councilmember Ottemeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Kewen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Seven, three? All right?
Yes.
So brings this to Bill 7725. Let's see, Roth and Bibb. Motion for final passage.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen. Do I have a second?
Roth.
Same by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first question I have, since Mr. Roth, you are the one who is requesting this reconsideration, what is your reason for reconsideration?
Rereading and understanding more from the past meetings that we've had on this, and catching up with everything. I do believe that the money that's going to be refunded from the county would save the taxpayer money of O'Fallon on $550,000, some odd thousand dollars.
Okay, so basically, you weren't prepared to vote on that, so, or to, that's, because typically for reconsideration, it's new information that is obtained that was not known at the time of the vote, which all the information was already available, an error or oversight in the original deliberation or voting process, so there was no error. So I would also argue that the original reconsideration by Councilwoman Thompson was the same way. It's just that not everybody was here, so they decided, they just didn't like the outcome of the vote, so they did a reconsideration. So I'm completely against that kind of manipulation for the first, you know, for one thing. This particular roundabout, Jamie, I know you said you're for it, that's great, but for the most part, 99% of the people that I've spoken to were not for this. So the idea behind the roundabout initially, Tony's not here to defend himself, because he was the one that presented this, he's gone on somewhere else, but the original justification was that it was for protect against serious accidents, T-bones, and fatalities. When I questioned Tony about the statistics about those three things, the statistics did not support that. So that's another reason why I was against that. It almost seemed like, it seemed like waste, right? So right now, our federal government is getting rid of, you know, fraud, waste, and abuse, and to me, this would be waste, because it's over-engineering, and, you know, having a problem that was looking, having a solution that was looking for a problem, and I just think that is, is a version of waste. And reducing taxpayers' burden, that $500,000 coming from the county is from the taxpayers. So we're still taxing the taxpayers, and we're using taxpayer money for something, in my opinion, is not needed. The initial federal grant that was, was approved after the reconsideration had nothing to do with safety. It had to do with less air pollution from idling. It did not address, address any kind of safety concerns. So that was another thing. So really just, you know, I am against this, because first off, I'm staying with my residents that don't want it, and second, I think it's waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Ragsdale?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what Councilmember Smith said, I live in Ward Five, and this roundabout will mostly affect round, citizens of Wards One and Wards Five, and the citizens of both wards adamantly have been against this roundabout from the very beginning, which the four, when Councilmember Ron Epps was here at the time, he was also a no vote. The four of us listened to our constituents, and we overwhelmingly heard from people that they do not want it. The council members that voted for it, unfortunately, their residents, while they might use it, they don't use it like our residents would use it. So it's very disheartening that the people that are in that area more than anybody else are the ones that adamantly don't want it. So for that reason, I am again very much against this roundabout.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Cook?
Mayor. You know, I've been a no vote against this the whole time, again, listening to our constituents. I'm at these HOAs, people are complaining about, asking all the time, is this still going to go through? Nobody wanted this to go through. We weren't listened to. The people that live on the south end of town, who may drive it once or twice a year, did not listen to us. And then, you know, I was kind of attacked a little bit after the last meeting, saying, you're costing the city a half a million dollars. Well, I can sit here and tell you that some of you all voted on some developments that are going in off a end that's going to cost the city $360,000 a year, because the city has to maintain everything. So, you know, we try to listen to what you all say down there, hey, we don't want this in our, in our wards, but we didn't get that with this. And so if it costs the city a half million dollars, I'm sorry, but you all have voted for things that are costing the city well more than that every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kewen?
I wasn't going to speak tonight on this issue, but given that the opponents are being very vocal, I thought I'd throw some data out there. Statistically, roundabouts are safer than four-way stop signs. That's just the truth. This is about safety. This isn't about popularity. I hate roundabouts with a passion. I hate them, but they are safer, and that's why they're cropping up all over the place. That's why MoDOT's putting them in all over the place. And I'll be honest, I completely disagree with the notion that, well, it's our ward, you should vote the way that we want you to. That's not how, that's not why there's 10 of us up here. There's 10 of us up here for a reason. We all get to decide what's best for the, for the city. And of course, each ward's going to have a different viewpoint on what's best for the city, based upon what's going on in their individual ward. I don't blame the, you know, Ward Five and Ward One for, of people for voting against it. It's just cannon fodder for the next election if they don't. But at the end of the day, this is about making that intersection safer. We saw in the workshop, they're putting in the fourth corner for that intersection coming out of a retirement community, a big retirement community. I think we're, it's incumbent upon us to make that intersection as safe as possible before it becomes statistically a nightmare. The last thing we want to see is people getting into accidents the way it is, because progress caught up with the way it is, and it wasn't safe enough. So that's why I'm in favor of it. It's not a matter of listening to the people or not listening to the people. It's a matter of what is statistically safer in that intersection. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Ragsdale?
So if I can address that, the safety issue is not new information.
The last thing we want to see is people getting into accidents the way it is, because progress caught up with the way it is, and it wasn't safe enough. So that's why I'm in favor of it. It's not a matter of listening to the people or not listening to the people. It's a matter of what is statistically safer in that intersection. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Ragsdale?
So if I can address that, the safety issue is not new information. This is something that we have heard before, and so to Councilwoman Smith's point is, for something to be reconsidered, it can't be reconsidered simply because you didn't like the outcome of the vote. It has to be because new information was presented, and I have not heard any new information being presented for this to be reconsidered whatsoever.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So with regard to safety, if Tony had told me that there were some serious accidents, there were fatalities, there was very little that happens there at that three-way stop sign. It's not, it's not four, it's three. And so there was so little, because I, I pushed him on that. I asked him, give me these numbers. I mean, it was, there's been zero fatalities, and the very, just a handful of minor accidents, and so to scare people into thinking that is such a dangerous intersection, you know, because, you know, Tony couldn't give me the numbers, and though that was a big reason why I was against it.
Okay. Mr. Kewen?
It's to re-raid right now, but as I pointed out, at our workshop today, it's going to be four-way very, very soon, within the next two years. And I'll reiterate my point, I don't think we should wait until there are fatalities at this intersection to make it a safer intersection. That's my point of view. I respect your point of view, I do, but that's mine.
Mr. Bib?
We're voting on accepting money for a project we've already approved, correct?
Correct.
So voting no won't stop the roundabout, it just stops the funding?
Stops the reimbursement.
Right. It just stops the reimbursement. The funding's already, Val's funding it, the feds are funding it. Right now, all we're voting on is whether or not the county participates in a three-way split versus a two-way split. Okay.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Seven yes, three no. Bill 7725 passes, becomes ordinance number?
Seven one nine zero.
Seven one nine zero. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7729. Motion for second reading by title only. Kewen. Motion by Councilman Kewen, second by Councilman Hurwick. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7729, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance granting portions of Chapter 700 Public Utilities to the city's Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Motion final passage?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Hurwick.
Second by Councilman Hurwick. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. 7729 passes, becomes ordinance number?
Seven, seven one nine one.
Seven one nine one. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7730. Motion for second reading by title only.
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Costella.
Second by Costella. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7730, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the reimbursement between St. Charles County and the City of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the Lake St. Louis Boulevard Phase Three construction project in an amount not to exceed $9,198,908.
Motion final passage?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Costella.
Second by Costella. Questions or comments? Mr. Bib?
Thank you, Mayor. This, this project, or this bill, is a very unique one, and normally, we're, like you, the roundabout we just talked about, we're talking about one specific intersection, or the next bill that we're considering is a longer stretch of road that is from one point to another. The way this one kind of gets complicated is the area that is within O'Fallon that is dedicated right-of-way was, the plan for it was put in place when the subdivision was approved, and the subdivision originally started in the county, and then O'Fallon annexed it. There's, there's been a long history there of the timing of things. I think that the, the right-of-way was dedicated before O'Fallon annexed it, if not, it was dedicated with the approval. The, the point of it is that this road, in my opinion, is a, is a need and a want by the county. I think we've done a lot in supporting what the county wants. I understand what the county wants. There's a ever-growing load on Highway DD. There's, if you talk to residents over there, they call it deadly DD. So the, the intent of the county's engineer is to have multiple two-lane roads that help service going north to south versus having to force like a four-lane road, which is what we're dealing with with Highway N. So I totally agree and understand where they're coming from, and commend them on their deflecting county, the county's helping the state with the Highway DD traffic. The challenge that I have, and the fear that I have, is while this portion is O'Fallon, there's a southern portion that is in the county. I would like that there be assurances that after the project is complete and both parties have their ends done, that, that O'Fallon doesn't end up owning the, the county portion. So in, in the absence of being able to fully understand that, I'd have to vote the way that I'm going to vote tonight.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Seven yes, three no. 7730 passes, becomes ordinance number?
Seven one nine two.
Seven one nine two. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7731. Motion for second reading by title only.
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Costella.
Second by Costella. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7731, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the agreement between St. Charles County and the City of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the Dyer Road reconstruction Phase One project in an amount not to exceed $865,600.
Thank you. Motion final passage?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Costella.
Second by Costella. Questions? Mr. Bib?
I just want to throw out that some other interesting backstory on this one is, before we annexed Amber Lay, the St. Charles County residents on this stretch demanded that we not approve another subdivision, neither the city or the county, until Dyer Road is improved. We've sensed most of those residents have come back and challenged, or really pushed back on the road being improved. Living off of it, I definitely think the improvement is needed. There isn't a shoulder currently, and the road is very windy. But, but somewhat unique, and kind of going back to the roundabout we were just talking about, with approval of this one, and then the plans that MoDOT just recently released for Highway N, I won't be able to leave my house without going through three roundabouts just to get to Highway 40 that's five minutes down the street. And on, on the Highway N, MoDOT meeting, Councilman Costella and I were both there. It was interesting that most of the other intersections, like even Lake St. Louis Boulevard and Highway N, that is already a lit intersection, there were comments from the residents requesting them, why don't we make this a roundabout? So we were seeing more, and typically I do, on the Facebook comments, I see all kinds of people going after, they don't want roundabouts. But the people that actually went to the open house for Highway N, at least two intersections were requesting roundabouts. I thought it was kind of fascinating. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. 7731 passes, becomes ordinance number?
Seven one nine three.
Seven one nine three. Thank you, Bess. Questions or comments on the committee and commission reports? Seeing none. Stand as read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar? Motion to approve, Hurwick?
Second.
Kewen. Motion by Councilman Hurwick, second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. Consent calendar's been approved. Brings to new business, brings us to a public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to diversify development and construction LLC to allow a movie theater, under certain conditions, on a certain tract of land located at 900 Caledonia Drive within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Someone here to present this? If you would, give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name is Tristan Raderman. I live at 317 Morningside Drive, out in St. Peters. I am here with the movie theater, or proposed movie theater redevelopment out at 900 Caledonia. Most of the complex is being turned into an entertainment center. We're proposing keeping three of the theaters on site, the three largest ones, to be turned into a kind of funky offbeat movie theater, something outside of St. Louis City we've never had out this way. That includes, you know, more specific programming towards families in terms of, you know, funky things like theater organ concerts, silent movies, Looney Tunes marathons before shows, live concerts, comedy events, midnight movies, first-run pictures as well, and then, of course, making it all affordable as well, lumping concessions prices into the ticket price as well, making sure that, you know, going to the movies is affordable and fun again. That's about all I've got.
All right. This is a public comment. If you want to step aside, Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C., AC Deanoff, city public advocate. I'm in favor of this proposal. This building was built for a movie theater. This southern part of our city needs a movie theater, and so that was the intent that the building was built for. So the three movie theaters at this location is prime. There'll also be a baseball batting cage, which I'm in favor of. However, I want to bring one issue to the attention of the council. It hasn't been dealt with by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there's no conditions about parking. Parking at this facility is a major issue. As you all know, it's a soccer complex. It brings in a lot of teams from out, throughout the Midwest, and there's a lot of parking issues right now. There's cross-access agreements, but with the hotels coming up, and I guess there's problems with the hotels and the other entertainment systems, I think it's a golf simulator and some of the bars and restaurants and hotels, I think they're all running into some credit issues or banking finance issues, and I think some of them will be going back through planning and zoning for additional approvals, and they're trying to revitalize, or change, or amend their original applications. But regardless, parking is always going to be an issue at this site. The site was not designed to take into consideration the heavy uses of the soccer park, movie, entertainment, bars, restaurants, hotels. And so I'd like the council to address the parking issues for all of these multi-use issues. At the same facility, you're going to have esports, which is going to draw on competition throughout probably the nation, and at least the Midwest. It's my understanding that the trampoline recreation indoor park, I think it was called Lava Island, is out. I don't, I think they couldn't come up with their financing, so there's, trying to fill this building. The more that they fill the building, the more the parking's going to be a premium and cause problems. We don't want to deter people from coming to O'Fallon and being frustrated over not being able to find a place to park that's safe, comfortable, and within walking distance. So I'd like somebody on the council to have the guts to bring up the topic of traffic and parking, and how they're going to resolve this issue. For those issues, I am in support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Crunk.
I'll just make this short and sweet. I'm excited to see anything new that's for family participation in the city of O'Fallon.
Thank you. With all the citizens' comments that we have, Tristan, if you want to come back up. The movie theater as it was before had how many theaters?
14 screens.
Had 14 screens. And how many seats per screen?
It varies. I can tell you the three largest ones remaining all total up to be roughly just under 800 seats.
Okay. So the other, what I'm getting at is, the gentleman was talking about parking.
Yes, yes.
So you're basically shrinking down to three, three screens. You're going to have esports, so, you know, it's not like we're adding more people into there with 14 screens and esports and the batting cages.
Yes, absolutely.
Basically, you're, there's going to be enough parking.
Yeah, we, we're kind of shrinking our footprint with the movie theater. Of course, we hope there's a lot of people on site for all of the entertainment, but I, I, we like our neighbors. We're willing to work with them.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because he was talking about parking and
Yes, absolutely.
He's thinking that we're going to have all 14 screens going, well, that's not happening, you're only having three screens.
Only three, yes, sir.
Do you have anything? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public comment, and bring us to Bill 7734. Motion for first reading by title only.
Costella.
Motion by Costella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Mr. Costella, please present the Bib, bill.
Here he is. Bill number 7734, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to diversify development and construction LLC to allow a movie theater, under certain conditions, on a certain tract of land located at 900 Caledonia Drive, within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Next is a public comment, to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jamie Becker to allow a shed that exceeds 150 square feet, under certain conditions, on a certain tract of land located at 407 Briscoe Avenue, within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri. If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Jamie Biggs. I live at 407 Briscoe Avenue. I am trying to get a shed. It is 200 square foot.
You went through P and Z, and I think they proved you unanimously, you're correct?
Yeah.
You're all right with the conditions. Ms. Smith?
So I'd like to suggest adding a condition to this approval. And so you already have a shed, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so you want to add a second shed?
Yes.
Right. And then your backyard backs up to Tom Genever with the, so it's going to be visible then from Tom Genever.
Yes.
So I would like to add a condition that you take out the smaller shed.
Okay.
And just bring in the larger shed.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jamie? If you would step aside. This is a public comment.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C., AC Deanoff, city public advocate, and I took a stance at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I didn't take a stance either yes or for. I reconsidered my thought, and I think the mayor brought up a great point, the conditional use permit. He brought up that it's her property, and I think the property owners have property rights in our country, in our state, our county, and our municipalities. And so I think that what somebody wants to do on their own property should be their choice. So at this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this keeps coming up, the condition or conditional use permit for sheds. If you look at other municipalities joining us, and other municipalities in the region and across the state, they allow larger sheds up to 300 square feet. I've asked staff to look at this proposal, and I understand that next month it'll be brought up before Planning and Zoning to change Section 400.275, subsection A, subsection two, subsection C, and subsection two of our codified city code to allow larger sheds within a residential district. I think it's the right thing to do. I think that in this case, the applicant is buying one of these tough sheds. It's got siding, it's got roofing, it's got, I believe, a window. It almost looks like a small house. And so it's going to probably improve their property and their property values. It does, but up to Tom Genever, as Councilman, Councilwoman Smith stated, and so I've changed a heart of mind. I'd like this code to be changed by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the recommendation to the city council, and I am for the approval of this conditional use permit to exceed 150-square-foot shed to her 200-foot request. Those are my comments. The other thing is, the shed amendment, the mayor brought it up, again, it's her property. She should decide if she wants to remove the shed or keep two sheds. I think that we need to get back to property owner rights in America, and not have so many restrictions and government breathing down our back every time we turn around. For those reasons, I support this application.
Thank you. There's no other comments, so Jamie, if you want to step back up. As the previous speaker stated, yes, I made those comments. And you also said in P and Z at the Planning and Zoning Commission that you have no problem removing the shed. So, I mean, that is your choice. So, and I appreciate you saying that you'd remove it. I, I thank you for that. So again, you know, it's your choice, so I appreciate it. Questions or comments? Did I close the public comment, right? Okay. We'll go and close the public comment. Anything else? Okay. Brings us to Bill 7735. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to place a condition on this bill that Jamie actually removes the sec... The initial...
You're just adding the condition.
Adding condition, yes. That she removes.
Adding the condition to remove the old shed.
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Ottemar.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings to Bill 7735. Motion for first reading by title only.
Smith?
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilwoman Smith, present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill number 7735, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jamie Becker to allow a shed that exceeds 150 square feet under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 407 Briscoe Avenue within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider approval of ordinances amending Section 405.230 and 405.240 of the O'Fallon, Missouri City Code relating to standards for public storm sewers and drainage facilities and storm water detention. So move Kuhn? Mr. Wade? Got to do the public hearing first.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just really quick, we wanted to touch up some things in Section 405. The first being the use of a certain type of pipe. So HDPE, high-density polyethylene pipe, is not allowed, and we are not changing that. The one thing we would like to change is the use of HDPP, which is polypropylene pipe. So I think there was some maybe misunderstanding, confusion as to the difference between the two. We've had the company come in. We've educated our staff a lot on exactly the different types. We have a couple of staff members that have been with MSD for a long time. They're very familiar with the pipe. They've worked around it a long time. MSD allows it, and so we want to continue with their specifications in allowing that type of pipe. And we put a couple of extra testing conditions on there, but we are comfortable with the use of that pipe, so. The other change, and this has probably been a long time coming, Section H six regarding what pipe is public and what pipe is private. Different sections in our codes, if you put them all together, it kind of explains that, but we wanted to be clear with it. So any pipe essentially that enters a detention basin from the last structure upstream to where it enters the detention basin would be public, would be private, and we would call out as private. We would also have a transition structure right there to make it clear that at that point, it goes from public pipe to private pipe and into the detention basin. Likewise, leaving the detention basin, we want it to be clear that any pipe leaving the detention basin to the next structure would again be private, and then the transition structure would be public, except in the case where this pipe continues to a creek, which in most cases it does, all of that being in common ground. And we want to leave that as private. The city doesn't want to get into private property, particularly in HOA common ground, get into their detention basins, particularly wet detention basins, and have to do things to the pipe that maybe the HOA has a different view on how things should be done. So really, we just want to clarify that. And so we put it more concise into this ordinance. And that's, that's the two changes, so.
Okay. Questions for Wade? Thank you, sir. If you would step aside, this is public hearing. Mr. Deenoff?
Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Arne C., AC Deenoff, city public advocate. Last week at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I took the stance of no on this because of the longevity, and it hasn't been out on the market long enough to do the proper testing and the proper research for longevity versus concrete versus the plastic polypropylene pipe that's proposed. I did do my due diligence when I was at the state capitol this week, and I reached out to experts at the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, the Missouri Water Commission, and experts on the House of Representatives and the State Senate Public Utilities Committees, and asked the question about polypropylene pipe. And I was told that it's like flex pipe. It has a better result. It will last longer than concrete. And it's not, as I took the meaning and interpretation from the person who presented to the city council, who was a different person on the engineering staff last week. It wasn't Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Montgomery explained it a little bit more detail than was explained last week. But it's not interfering with the concrete piping. The concrete piping will still remain. This is just a transition to the public facility and the mechanisms or the, the additional items that move the flowwater downstream. So after talking to the experts at the state capitol, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, people who deal in utilities, this is a good form of a plastic to use. And it should get at least 45 to 60 years worth of life and value. And so I am changing my vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission to a yes, and I support this change in our code and offering this option. It's optional, and it's not mandatory. And therefore, I support this change in the code. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing? Any other questions for Wade? Hmm?
I have a comment.
Mr. Kuhn?
Just to clarify the record, I started designing plumbing systems in 1993, and high-density polypropylene was in practice at that time, in fact, in common practice. The reason being is, as Mr. Deenoff has discovered, HDPP is actually much less rigid, much more flexible, and therefore, much more durable than other types of plastic pipe like HDPE. As far as concrete and other materials, HDPP not only will last longer than many of the other alternatives, it's a lot cheaper to put in. So I'm glad to see that we are making that part of our code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Brings the bill... Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
Brings the bill 7736. Motion for first reading?
Kuhn?
First by Councilman Kuhn, second?